Where's he living?
You're good.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. Please stand.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. And a note, some reports received and filed.
I was on automatic. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, indeed. We have the collector's September 2025 fees and the treasurer's September 2025 reconciliation report.
Okay. Committee or committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings.
Uh, we had a meeting this afternoon about the, we were just talking about the tower that's public, works in a parks area, and I don't think either one of you going right, so I'll go represent for that. Uh, Wednesday night, got to hang over relatives and friends, keep the own fires burning, chili supper raffle and fundraiser at the Eagles. So, Thursday's Big Brother, Big Sister, got a cornhole and chili cook-off. Fairgrounds, Friday at four o'clock, they got the Mid-American Bank Sports Complex ribbon cutting, and I don't know if y'all been out there, they had a tournament already, maybe two weekends ago, and drove through there just to kinda check it out, and there was a lot of out-of-state tags and stuff, so take their money, it's, it can be well spent here.
Good. In addition, is there anything today on Drag Days?
That was last week. I, I went to that.
The announcement thing?
Yeah. Yeah, I missed it.
The press conference. Tomorrow is Mid-Mall Regional Fire Information Annual Dinner. Uh, you mentioned Big Brother's. Uh, on Thursday, Ward Four is gonna have a town hall meeting. I reside at Ward Four, and it is in the West Side, so I'll be going to their town hall meeting on Thursday.
Well, tonight, uh, our 250th committee is giving a program to the Old Munichburg Association, trying to bring them on board for next year. Uh, Wednesday, I have a workforce meeting from nine AM to noon. Any other Mid-Mall work we see during the week? Friday, you mentioned the soccer. Uh, Saturday, sent to Union Veterans. Monday, I think there's gonna be a co-ed executive board. I have a person who knows that, it's on my calendar, so. That is all I have, uh, any commission comments? Okay. Beds and contracts, approval and signing of Newman, Conley, and Ruth Agreement with the assessor's office.
I got it for him.
Okay.
Um, this is an agreement with Newman, Conley, and Ruth for the assessor's office for the year of 2026. It has a do not exceed amount of a hundred thousand, and we're just needing signature of it today. Jill did review it, she's just not here to sign off on it, but I usually have her do it.
Make a motion to approve and sign a Newman, Conley, and Ruth Agreement with the assessor's office.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. New business accounts payable review.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks.
I'd ask for approval accounts payable pending review. I think we wanna do the peak cards, so.
I make a motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Why'd he run off so fast?
He's working.
Anyone wanna sit here and watch this? That kinda hurts my feelings.
Go ahead. Uh, signing of the annual contribution election for SURF retirement, four percent.
Um, SURF annually makes us sign the, um, contribution of the four percent that the county is gonna continue to pay, if that's your choice. Um, I'm pretty sure that Jay does have it in the budget for next year.
Yes.
Give a other. Make a motion to approve and sign the annual contribution election for the SURF retirement at four percent.
Second, would you discuss it?
Yes, please.
Um, the, the four percent contribution that the county makes, they only make it if the employee is making at least a six percent. Is that right?
No, it's any new employee hired after 2002, I believe it is. Uh, you're contributing four percent for all new employees after that date. All of those older employees that have been here before that date, you don't have to pay anything on. But when, but the six percent is part-timers have to pay their six percent, if they go over the thousand hours in a year. So maybe you're thinking of the deferred? Are you thinking of the deferred?
No, no. I, I, I thought that we didn't make a SURF contribution at the county level unless the employee is participating in a deferred comp. It's not required.
No, it's not required. Yeah, no. I mean, it is required for them if they go over the thousand hours as a part-timer, or if they were here full-time and they went to part-time, they're considered once-in, always-in, so they would have to contribute the six percent as a part-timer, but.
But as a full-timer, not?
No. The first year that SURF changed to this, the county commission did allow for the employee to pick up that four percent.
Okay.
Yeah, but it only lasted for a year, and then for, ever since then, the county has picked up the four percent for all the new employees. I mean, that is something you can choose every year. You can choose not to, but.
Jay, what is that, what does that number cost you?
I, I don't have that, sorry. I can get it to you and send it out.
Definitely, it keeps getting higher as this, as this older ones retire, because every new one, you're gonna pay that one. If that makes sense, if, when they enacted it.
Okay, so, back up here, the ones that were here as of a certain date, they are required to do four percent. But then what difference does it make whether somebody old leaves and somebody new replaces them?
Now you're paying the four percent.
Well, aren't we paying it for the old one too?
No.
Well, then you're, there is a difference. Why aren't we paying it for the old person?
That's SURF rules, that's when they enacted it.
Not if, we don't pay it at all?
No. The fees do, right? We get fees from the assessment fund, the recorder's done, and the collector submits money, just like we've always submitted money for the retirement since the beginning of SURF. But once SURF had a little trouble, and then they had to come back and say, well, now we have to charge the counties four percent. If you were here at that date, the counties won't have to pay for you, but anybody that was hired after that date, you're gonna have to pay for. And as these go off, you're gonna start paying four percent on everybody, if that makes sense.
No, it doesn't make sense.
It's kinda like the state did it. That's kinda like the state did it too, with the posters. All the new people have to pay. The employees pay there. We're paying for our employees here.
So we can't even voluntarily pay for people that have been here since 2002 or before? It's because of the SURF rules?
Yeah, I mean, they have enough money.
That's kinda, well, I think what you're getting at, that maybe we should be doing it for everybody, right? If we're gonna do it for one, we do it for all, or?
I, I, my, my theory behind it, and the way I thought it operated is, the county did not make a payment to that fund under this condition unless the employee was making some, a contribution of their own. But you say no.
I think you're confusing that with the deferred comp, but, 'cause this is the pension plan itself, and the deferred comp is SURF too. So they're both SURF, right?
Right, but the deferred comp is, that's just deferred, that's just up to the employee, do they wanna participate or not?
Absolutely.
If they do participate and they leave, they get their money back.
Absolutely.
Because none of it is county money.
Right, it's the SURF retirement board that makes that decision.
If we cleared that up so well.
Okay, we'll call for the questions. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
And just 'cause you've been here older, and you're not paying the four percent, the benefits are all the same, no matter what. I just wanna clear that up. When you said treating everybody?
That doesn't clear anything up for me, that makes even more.
We all get the same benefit.
Well, no, we don't, we don't get the same amount. We might get, it's based upon your salaries while you're here, so we don't get.
Same formula.
Same formula, let's go with that.
Yeah. All right. You didn't want five phone calls, that's okay.
Let's go for ten.
Oh, well, probably wouldn't be.
Okay, well, move ahead. Uh, approval and signing of change order number one, 2025 chip seal program.
So this change order is for the final close-out documents for the chip seal program. Uh, the main reason for additional costs was an increase in the type-two chip seal due to a couple of the roofs being wider than what was used in the calculations. Overall, this change order is an increase in construction by thirty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars in charges. We had several down around the Hindley area and Oaxacan area that, when I calculated quantities, I used twenty-four feet, and they were twenty-seven, twenty-eight feet wide, so. But everything should be in good shape. They didn't go ahead and seal everything the way they, the contract has, it's just an overrun.
He's doing his con.
He did.
He did just.
That's a lot of these on the east side. I was wondering if people on the east side need wider curves to get around.
Getting, getting older, we can't see as good, so we take the wider curve. All right, y'all make a motion to approve and sign change order number one for the 2025 chip seal program.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, where it was here? Discussion of Cole County Sheriff's Department Jail, replacement of rooftop HVAC units. We had talked about this.
Can we move that to the bottom of the agenda until Greg comes back?
Yeah, we will do that, okay. Uh, 2024 federal JAG, 2026 state DTF grant award.
Right, we applied for the Drug Task Force Award, and we were awarded one hundred and eight thousand, three hundred, fifty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. I asked for your approval, your signature, you have to sign it and initial every page.
I did see that on there, I thought Sam was gonna love this one. That doesn't look like.
When I put some on it.
That might be just, uh.
Like you like.
The contract wasn't attached to the, to the other letter, so I didn't know how many pages it was.
DTF, I'm sorry. DTF stands for?
Drug Task Force.
She's got this.
Okay, well, I thought it was Deputy Training Fund, but I have to rethink this. Drug Task Force.
Okay.
You got the contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, 2024 federal JAG, 2026 state Drug Task Force Grant Award of one oh eight, three fifty-nine point nine five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of advanced purchase of a John Deere wheel loader.
So, um, next year, we would like to buy a new wheel loader. This would be a little bit different than what we've been doing in the past. So we currently have one loader, and we rent a loader every year. So the one loader that we do own, it kinda bounces around between the Monticello main shop and then Centertown. Uh, generally during, during the normal year, it's at, at the main Monticello facility, we move it to Centertown to load salt during the winter. And to have one at our main shop at Monticello, we rent one, and it'll be anywhere from five to six months, and the primary purpose of that loader is to, to load salt. And we've been doing some figuring, and as prices change with rentals and everything, we determined it would be better if we actually bought this unit instead of renting it every year. And it has a five-year warranty, we'll replace it after the five-year warranty is up. Uh, this particular type of equipment, being in the salt as much as it is, it's very hard on it, and so we determined that it'd be more cost-effective to surplus that unit when that warranty expires, and then get a new one and just do a five-year life cycle on it. And I put together some, some comparisons between renting and buying, and, and we can save money by buying it rather than renting it, and the rental costs are actually based on a five-month. Like I said, sometimes we'll go six months, depending on when salt's delivered and a bunch of different factors, so. Uh, just like I said, ran some numbers, and I just, it, it makes a little more sense to go ahead and buy this. And also, on top of that, you know, we'll have the loader year-round instead of just that five-to-six month window, so we'll be able to keep one at Centertown and then one at the main shop. So, the price is two hundred and two thousand, four hundred, ninety-nine dollars, sixty-eight cents, with marking equipment, and it's a two thousand, uh, 2025 John Deere five-twenty-four wheel loader. This would come out of the two, two-eleven road and bridge project for next year. Questions?
So when will we receive this?
Uh, it would be next year sometime, it's, it's gotta get ordered, and there's some, and we're ordering early to take advantage of price, uh, price breaks and then just to make sure we can get it next year.
Yeah, I know, we've done it before, it was like two years on some of this.
Yeah, it's, it's gotten better, and, um, we will have to rent the one until this one comes in, so the sooner the better, but, you know, the changeover as far as rental budget, we did lower our rental budget, we're hoping we get it early in the year. We did lower our rental budget, budget by fifty-six thousand to twenty thousand in next year's budget, so that's thirty-six thousand less for rental, and that's, that's a little bit, little bit on the high side for the loader. Uh, we did, for last year's snow season, we only had it for five months. Again, that can be six months, depending on how things play out, so. Should, should be a net savings to us overall.
State contract.
State contract, yeah.
Two-eleven road and bridge fund. What else is, can you be some more things that go through two-eleven?
Oh, pickup trucks, Ford five-fifties, um, the, all the equipment we buy. We, we do two-eleven, and we also do sales tax, so it's a little bit of a split, and it can vary from year to year. Uh, this year, we're a little higher on our equipment purchases, just because we had a little bit of extra to the sales tax to, to round out the final year of the sales tax cycle. Uh, and then there was just things that we needed to purchase to, you know, it was just time, and so the two-eleven budget is, is a little higher than normal as well. I think we're, we're somewhere about a million dollars in total equipment purchases for next year.
How fine was it? My questions were all answered when you did the cost comparison, and gave us really good idea of maybe realizing some savings, or at least breaking even on it, and you don't have to worry about taking time to go pick the rental up and everything like that, so, you know.
The one we currently have, I think is about ten years old, give or take, and will, we're kinda but planning for a next year replacing that, or the following year replacing that one. We may push it another year to separate them out a little bit, but you can see the wear and tear on that equipment. It's, it's the salt that is just terribly hard on those particular pieces of equipment, just 'cause they're in the salt day in and day out during the, during the winter, so. It's good to, good to not have to spend it. You know, if we can keep it under warranty and let it go before that warranty, or right when the warranty's done, that's the ideal way to do that.
You got something?
I got, it's a, it's a quote or proposal, and it's just signs, acceptance, and here.
Okay. Good. I'll make a motion to approve the advanced purchase of the 2025 John Deere five-twenty-four wheel loader.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. First reading of budget adjustment number six.
And actually, I wrote, I put it on there wrong, it is number seven. We had number six last week. Uh, this is, first reading of seven, is for fifty-nine thousand, it's for extra fees that came in for the Enterprise Fund EMS, and that we'll be putting back in their budget for their contingency or whatever account. So I'll bring it back up in ten days for approval.
Uh, purchase of two Tahos for the Sheriff's Department.
We went, uh, they went ahead and ordered the Tahos, and we ordered them early, um, for next year. We usually don't get them in until next year, but we got the phone call that they were in. So we would like to take money out of contingency and pay for those Tahos now, and then lower our sales tax capital improvements from that amount for next year.
Sheriff, Sheriff, talk to us.
Yeah, see to us individually about it, and I guess we used to do this anyway, but they just had these done earlier for some reason, and we can, we can deny it or reject it, and, but then we gotta get back in line, and then you don't know for sure when the next one's gonna come along.
Right.
So I think it's probably in our best interest to go ahead with the purchase after, even after talking to the sheriff about it.
Yeah.
There's questions as to whether they'll be quote in service this year, or?
I don't think.
Probably not, based on the order of the equipment necessary for.
Yes, it definitely won't be in service this year. We'd have to order the equipment.
That's because of the modifications we do to it after we get it.
Correct. We have to order the equipment, once the equipment come in, then we have to get it into Wireless USA for all the installs to happen, to get into wireless at the end of the year. It's a nightmare, so it will be in January or February before we can get into wireless.
And these are 2026s, so.
Yes.
There, we've already got 2026s now.
So these Tahos are, they turn out to be traveling computers, don't they? With, I mean, with what you're gonna do to the inside of it, the, the scrap bin, laptop, and all the wiring.
Yes. The docking stations, the radios, the light cars, the prisoner seats, all of that has to be installed.
Yes. Makes sense.
Yeah, any thoughts for that, or do we need?
I believe he brought up a transfer already, and so.
I think we.
Yeah, I think you're correct.
Okay, so we just do the transfer then for approval of that?
Good. Maintenance director's back, so we will go back to the discussion of Cole County Sheriff's Department Jail, replacement of rooftop HVAC units. We discussed this, and then the kind of, but.
Well, Jeff and I tried to get it all together, and then, uh, somebody couldn't make it, some canceled it, and I've been trying to also, trying to get everybody together again, uh, and then I was on vacation, uh, but I have been working on it with Brian, Brian, our IT person, as well as, uh, I'm not gonna mention any companies that I'm working with right now, 'cause I don't, uh, occasionally bid stuff, I don't wanna, uh, get into that closely, and I don't wanna mention any prices either. Been working with a company, uh, as well as with Wayne, who did the original study for us over at the jail. We are looking at currently right now, working on doing the front-end system. What happened on Friday, a couple weeks ago, was the control ward for the automation failed. When that failed, it shut down the whole unit. Uh, we were lucky, uh, got a company to come in, moved a few wires around, reprogrammed it, and it's back up and running. Yes, we have rooftops that are failing, but the automation is also failing, it's at an end of life also. Uh, right now, we're working on the front-end part of the automation, get that switched over, so when we do start putting new rooftops up there, it'll be just a plug and place to go. Uh, and it'll be a little additional cost on the back end for a few other pieces of equipment that we'll have to install in. I would like, I need to talk, sit down and talk to Wayne about a couple of units to see if we can switch those to a different type of unit, instead of bringing five thousand or six thousand CFM carrier all day long during the cold weather, during the hot weather, if we could switch those to a modulating unit, uh, and put a CO detector in it on the return dock, so if the CO2 gets too much, it brings a little more fresh air, instead of bringing that much fresh air, and maybe save some energy to use somewhere at the jail, bring it down a little bit. Just a couple questions. Uh, we've got the blueprints, they're over my office, of everything that he's done, uh, the schedule of stuff, uh, if y'all would like to see it, I'll bring it over to, and let you look through it. But there's just a couple questions I had, that when we were going through this process with him, writing us all up, and I thought we had changed those units, but they're still the same units that we have up here, same style we have up here now, so. Questions?
Well, I think, yeah, yeah, originally, we were looking at replacing all of them at one time. I don't know if that's really doable, so I don't know.
I would like to.
If we.
If we put them out to bid, see what the cost is to do all nine units at one time, and then maybe break it down to maybe just replacing three at a time, or getting single bids, what it costs to change out each one at a single time. But, you know, it's still gonna be, uh, we're gonna tie up a contractor for a day and a half, or maybe two days, so, there we go. Boss, Jeff, you got, uh, see these wheels turning, so.
Well, is, is there a way to measure, um, the usage that we're putting each of the units through, the, the number of hours it's, it's running?
Those units, those are units over there run twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, it'll shut down.
Well, so under that, under that condition, they all fail at the same time?
Yes, they will fail basically at roughly the same time.
Or wear out at the same time?
Wear out, right.
I don't know, I don't, if you did, a third, a third, a third, you're, you're shooting.
The rolling the dice.
You're rolling the dice as to which three are the nearest.
I would say the nearest three would be the ones over the pods.
Why do you say that?
'Cause they're bringing a hundred percent outside area in all the time.
They're working harder.
They're working harder.
But there's no measure, there's no way to measure they're working hard?
Not right now, no.
So, yeah, we put it out for bid, are replacing all nine, are replacing them, say, three, three, and three, and that would give us a better idea.
One of the variable costs on replacement is, how many times do you bring in a crane?
Correct.
To lift the old ones off and put the new ones on, and that's not it. That's not it. Low cost.
No, it, and it's gonna be the, where they can set them, and how far they can reach with that crane, is depending on what size crane they use too, so. Uh, I, we, I've talked to a couple guys that work in HVC field about putting them up and running them across on gantry cranes, but they told me not to do it, 'cause it'll turn the roof up, and they're more expensive to turn the roof up, so we don't need that right now either. So, best thing is to get a big enough crane, and we can lift them up, do, maybe do the furthest ones away from the, and then we can mark down to a smaller crane for lifting areas, but it's still gonna be tight.
And Greg, these will be placed in such a way that if we were to build out?
Yes.
The rest of the jail, that they wouldn't have to be moved or anything?
No, they're, when the building was built, these units were set in place with a, uh, additional room for expansion. Uh, the only, the odd ones that I'm, um, not, there's one that's on the lower pit, or lower roof, but they, where they just put the data center, and they stuck three, uh, units to keep that data center cool, those might have to be moved if we do in the future, 'cause there's, I think there's a unit that's set right there.
So Wayne did a study on this, right?
Yes.
So where's that at? Tells us what we're needing and stuff.
It's over my office, so it's on, it's on the.
How, how deep do y'all wanna get in this?
I don't wanna get into it deep, and I don't want Sam to get into it deep. I want you to get into it. But here's just an observation from a layperson that doesn't know anything about rooftop units. If there are rooftop units sitting there, that we're putting, that, they were put there to, to, to furnish good air, temperatures, and so on, to area that does. to, to furnish good air, temperatures, and so on to an area that we're not really using, the common sense tells me those units haven't been worked as hard as the other ones have. That have been pumping air to the jail.
They still all bring outside air, but not as much as the pods do.
But that's only just an observation from somebody that doesn't know the.
We had a meeting scheduled in July. I don't remember when Wayne did his study, but we had a meeting scheduled in July. It got canceled, somebody was not gonna be or whatever, and then we had one on September 25th, and so, we just gotta get the ball rolling, Greg. We'll light the fire under your feet and say, we gotta get going with it. I think there's, I've got a lot of questions about it, because we've got nine units, right?
Yes.
Every damn one of them is different. And, I mean, I'd like to talk to Wayne and say, can we go back in and replace them with some stuff that's compatible with each other? And if we do three at a time, take one off, maybe you can throw it in the boneyard, use parts of it off of it for other ones for repairs, because there's things that we can do to bandage things from some of the old units. And I don't know, I know it's not gonna be feasible to have all the same units, because they produce different.
Yeah.
Air, but I would just like to talk to Wayne about it more before we get too far down it, but I don't wanna kick it down the road too far and have one fail, but we've been able to. I guess the one with the electrical control board and stuff, they were able to work around, but that wasn't the actual unit itself, that was.
No, that was, that was the automation part of the, of the unit.
Is there any redundancy on these units? In other words, if one unit goes down, there's none of the other ones can kick in and work harder taking out that area? No redundancy?
I didn't design any redundancy in that building. That's what I was trying to do with prayer center and, yeah.
Yeah, I still think when you look at maybe doing two units over there, I know there was a significant cost difference, but in the long room, in the long run.
Well, you had the cost difference of the two units versus the one, but you're still gonna have to put the same duck work in, you're still gonna have to run either larger feed to those units. I don't think it was a true $40,000 cost versus one, one versus two.
So the study that Wayne did, we don't need to get any kind of architect or engineer involved.
No, it's all done.
So we can sit down, get some questions answered. If you guys have questions, like, you know, any redundancy, build some in there, whatever, I'd say email, let's just email them to Greg, we throw them in a list, let's get a meeting together, and if you don't wanna do it in an open meeting, then we can reschedule something. Like I said, it was July and September, we had some meeting stuff.
Yeah, I tried last month too, and just couldn't get anybody.
Yeah, we need to get moving on this, because they are at the end of life and.
Okay, so let's pick a day, and Jeff, and you, and I, and Wayne, and Jessica, we'll just sit down, and I'll bring the blueprints over and we'll just go through them.
These things were born on what date?
Those were manufactured date on the units, I think, were 2007.
You didn't go on the use until nine?
Yeah.
They've been running, I don't know.
Nine, nine or 10, yeah.
We were in there in nine.
So, I'm fine with that, and you know, we need to talk about that. The other thing, we need to talk about where the money is coming from.
Yeah.
So, and then how much, how much are we talking, you know?
I guess we could put it out for bid, let's see what total nine comes in versus three, but we'll have to know which three we wanna, of that we wanna do or.
I don't think you wanna do three though, because if you do three, and then you bid out the next three, it could be a whole different vendor handling.
Right.
I think you wanna do all nine of them and figure out how to do them in steps. I don't know.
I think that Wayne would come into great help, just telling which ones we need to do in the first phase, second phase, there's.
We may end up buying all nine units at one time or something too, and have them sitting there, but, and I don't know if it's a, I think there's a lot of questions that we had for Wayne, and you can say, you're gonna have him at the meeting.
I'll have it.
Okay.
And I may have a couple of people there too, so.
This is not the kind of product that you can find on state contract, I guess, is that right?
I did not see anything on state contract, but I can, we go back and look.
There's HVAC repair stuff, but not for total brand new units that we're specifically looking at.
Yeah. Now, generators, yes, there's contracts for those.
Okay. Yeah, with Wayne, get some dates and see if I can work something out.
Okay, yeah.
Done deal.
Thanks, sir. Okay, I do not see anything else on our agenda.
Y'all have some unfinished you wanted to bring up?
Yeah.
On the janitorial for Public Works?
Yeah, or janitors, and they gave us a letter, they're done, the 31st of this month. They have to resign from doing that due to some health reasons and whatnot, so we're gonna be out of a janitorial service. So, I know we talked about options, about maybe getting another contractor in there, having Greg's crew was an option too, I know.
I know they have a vampire.
It's two, two days, two hours, you'll have to figure out a way to make that, Greg. That's my opinion.
Doesn't matter to me who does it, we just need, we just need that service to continue. Right now, they're doing it three days a week. We think we could do two days a week, probably a Tuesday and Friday or something like that, so, but the, the days could vary, but.
And when are they, when's their last?
October 31st will be their last day. I don't know if that's, is that a Friday or? Yeah. It's next week, so. It doesn't matter to us what route we go, we just need something done.
Do you agree with that, two day, two days, two times a week or two days?
Two times a week, yes, and.
And how many man hours?
So, when Sharon and Mike were doing it, maybe an hour and a half, two hours tops was two people.
Four, four person hours.
Yeah, that would be on the high side. Yeah, it's basically mopping the office floors, they would mop the back bay there, clean sinks, bathrooms, everything, and they clean the bathroom and take out trash on the other, the small shed behind the main shed.
Well, we just bid the janitorial and we rejected it because it was too much, so bidding this makes no sense. There's no sense having somebody different doing EMS, the new building right now either, I feel, but we're doing that. I mean, we've got a maintenance crew, we should be handling that stuff, or we bid it all out. I mean, why are we doing it in bits and pieces, so? So I think we just need to be able to handle it. I don't know what all, is it basically touch up the bathrooms?
It's a, it's a full cleaning of the bathrooms. We have basically three bathrooms. Take out trash. And it's mopping floors, sweeping floors, they do, the current people that clean right now, they also will wax the floors every couple of months, six months, yeah, and then they strip and strip wax and buff and all that once a year. That could be hired out separately. I don't know, if we got somebody else in, if they didn't do that, you could just have somebody come in and do that once a year or something, and wouldn't have to do a contractor or anything like that, it would just be a service.
We got tow machines too, right Greg?
I've got two left, I have not replaced any of them.
So, we got machines, that's, that's part of our maintenance, I would say, so. And we used to do it all the time, we used to take care of it. I used to, I think it used to be five days a week.
Yeah, I don't know that, I know.
I don't think they went out there at morning.
I don't think so, I think it was probably.
Twice a week.
Yeah, I think it was two back then. And then when classic cleaning came on board, for whatever reason, we went to Monday, Wednesday, Friday, doing it Friday, and then coming back and doing it Monday, you know, maybe it wasn't totally necessary, but it just kinda depended on what was going on and whatever, so. But to save some money, we think we can do two days a week back to what it was before. Greg's crew quit during COVID, and it was, you know, a little bit of COVID and a little bit of availability and whatnot, and just with all that process, we just, we had, yeah, and that's when we looked at having an outside company do it, and that's the route the commission chose at that time, so.
So, I think we need to be able to handle it ourselves, leave it up to you guys. I don't see any reason to bid out two days a week, two hours. If we're gonna do that, and we've got, we already had some janitorial bids, we should've just took them and got rid of our janitorial work.
Okay. I've, I, I had talked to somebody, so I need, I mean, potentially could, could do that, but, yeah, we just need to make a.
Really, the reason we had it done then was because of the price tag we had, and it was a friend of somebody at Public Works that kinda jumped in there and said they'd do it, and it's such a reasonable price that it didn't make sense not to let them do it.
I don't think we'll find one at that price tag. No, with classic, we pick classic cleaning.
Yeah, they were, they were doing Boone County, and Brian knew them from up there, Brian always did, and asked them if they'd come down and give us a price, and they did and worked out, so. But they're like, so they're a little up there in age and just, it's just not doable really for them anymore, and Byron had surgery or something like that, and so they're just, it's time for them to get out.
Well, we were lucky to have them as long as we did.
Right.
I, I mean, in my opinion.
Sure.
And we just got the janitorial bids, and I forget what they came up per hour, I mean, there's a big fluctuation there, but, you know, talking to one of them that had said what his hourly wage was, they were way below that, so.
Send us. I'd like to know what we're paying right now for that service, if, if you could send it to us.
Uh, I can, I can get it, but do you know? It's maybe, maybe in the 18 to 20 range a year.
About 18 and 19 levels.
Between 15 and 20 thousand.
Sam's not retired until the end of next year, so.
Sam, if you're looking for a part-time job, would you?
I don't think so. Can I wear a suit to do it? You can wear whatever you want.
Yeah, we got a bunch of them sitting over there in storage yet, I believe.
No, we just, we just need to make a decision relatively quick, so, it's, whatever, I'm indifferent on it. Sam, if you got somebody that is interested, we can entertain that idea, but.
I have, evidently they give me a check, but I'll, I'll check again, just, just to see.
I don't remember what we were paying for the other one.
He was close to 18, and then they did charge extra those months for stripping and whatever.
That was an extra cost to strip and wax, yeah.
So. No, we'll make a decision before 31st.
So should we put it on the agenda for Tuesday?
I'll make a motion that we have our building maintenance take care of it, two days a week.
That's fine.
Two hours.
I get another full-time employee.
Put it on the table.
I'll second motion for discussion purposes. I would ask Greg to do this. We're asking you to do, your department to do something they're not doing now, and it would take you about four, I shouldn't use the word man hours, it's called person hours for it, not misgendering anybody. If you had to do something you're not doing now, and it's gonna take you four hours to get it done, what four-hour job are you gonna skip? What's the most, what's the probable result? You don't get to manufacture four hours, you just get to shift them. So they're gonna, you're gonna shift four hours out to his place.
Who, who am I not gonna piss off? That's what it's gonna come down to.
I'm asking you where you would take those, get those four hours. And if you say 15 minutes because of the Western District Commissioner's Office, I'll give it up, because some days, I don't need anybody. And if I knew you were only coming in there once a week, I'd maybe save that to be my trashy day, but, so I'm just asking you.
I'd have to sit down and figure out where, how, how you're working. Where you're working the schedule to make everything work.
Can you figure out where everybody is at eight hours a day?
Yeah.
And tell us where they're at, what they're doing every day?
Well, if.
I mean, no, seriously.
I can, pretty close, pretty close.
Okay.
If he doesn't mind having his building cleaned during the day.
Yeah, that's.
During the building hours, I don't have a problem with it.
Typically, it's been after hours, I was gonna add that. I don't know that it matters. Classic cleans come during the day occasionally, if it worked in their schedule that way, I don't know that.
You're not gonna be able to wax floors during the day when people are in there walking around, I mean, it's.
That would be after hours.
Mopping the floors while they're there.
That was usually for them, that was the weekend normally.
Do these floors get mopped out here?
Yeah.
Before we open. So I can start taking pictures of footprints and stuff, and we can go, how often do they get mopped?
Once a week.
Maybe narrow it down to once a week, so.
I would ask Eastern District Commissioner, would you amend your motion as it stands now to, to say that the maintenance departments shifts four hours from the current schedule of jobs to do the four hours out there, which do it out of the people you have.
Yes, I will amend it in that fashion. To do it with the people that we have, if you gotta come and ask for more people later on, that'd be up to you, but that, you ask for more people, I think, every year anyway, so, I'm sorry, that's my amendment.
Okay, and I withdraw my second to the first and put the second on your amended motion.
If you need to.
I, I have one question. So then, I think your people, basically, you know, they're, they're all covering buildings like at, at 5:30, 6 o'clock, so, so this would have to be something done during the day.
We'll better this guy, we'll make it work somehow.
Okay.
It's not ideal to do it during the day, but if that's the only option, and that's the, the route the commission wants to go, then that's the way.
Well, I'm just, I don't, we just need to look at it, but, but, you know, that might be, I don't know, we'd have to see, but.
They were, or, it's seven to 4 o'clock is when people are there, so.
Can you, can you just, out of curiosity, give me a list of what you want down there?
Uh, yeah.
I mean, it can be very simple, high level.
Right now?
No, not right now, just get it to.
We can, I mean, we got, what, we got it in the bid form.
I'm not asking you to do anything I wouldn't do, I'll go put a tight back seat and rubber gloves on, let me walk through it, and I'll tell you how long it should take. I see a lot of stuff take longer than it should take, so, there's, there's a lot of things that can be done, it's just you gotta put your mind to it. We got, okay, the clerk's office, for example, during election time, they got a lot of crap going on their lap. You know what they gotta do? They still gotta do their job. So, it's just, this is, this is just such a simple thing to me, it seems like, I don't know why you're fighting it so hard, Greg. You got full staff right now.
I called for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
I've got full staff right now, I'm correct. But when Gerard retired, they took that maintenance person and put him over at the Sheriff's Department, so that took that one person away.
Usually you had two people over there anyway, and if you didn't, then the sheriff probably hadn't been bidding it out or hiring somebody. So, it's not like you actually lost a person. We've actually got one person that does janitorial over there, which I think we had a designated person there, and then we had people doing maintenance over there, which you've got somebody doing maintenance over there, which they almost always need, unfortunately, so.
We'll figure it out, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
I'm saving this for last.
Make the motion if we stand in recess at 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.